It's 5:04, so I'll open the May 2020 Meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being held via Zoom because of the coronavirus shutdown. So we have, we're kind of working out the format. Before we start though, I do want to introduce our new alternate member, David Diaz. And hi Tom, how are you?
Hi, everyone.
So very nice to have you with us. We actually have five members today, so when we get to a point of a vote, you'll, you'll just be there for, you can add comment and it's certainly informative for you, but we actually have five members for the full vote besides you. Thank you. Just to kind of explain how this is going to work, we actually have two items on our agenda today, including, both of which are public hearings. So maybe I'll open the public hearing for 46 Lake Street. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm just going to interrupt you for a minute. Tom, can you hear me? We're gonna do it, we're gonna try something out with you. We're gonna do it to unmute you and turn off your video so people can't see you during the meeting until it's your turn.
That's fine.
Okay, I just didn't want you to not know. When it is your turn, I'm gonna unmute you and then ask you to start your video and you just click yes.
Okay, I'm just here if you need me.
Okay, alright.
So Michael, like when we have the public hearing for 46 Lake, he will be unmuted, right?
Yes, I can unmute.
Okay. Alright, so I'm gonna open the public hearing for 46 Lake. And at the beginning, before, before we get any feedback, I wanted to just kind of ask you, actually, Michael, if you would kind of explain, or you just did explain it to Tom. I think, I think Tom is the only applicant who's gonna be present tonight. So they, they will, he will be muted on his microphone and video, except for when we're discussing his particular application. And we also have, in the Cooperstown picture down there, Kyle Fabiano, who is the Village website person. And so he's set up this meeting and he's gonna stay for the beginning of it, but afterwards, Michael's gonna take over and be our host. But Kyle is in the process of trying to get this live streamed. It will be fully recorded and transcribed. And as soon as the live stream is available, it will be posted to YouTube. So then we are at 46 Lake. If you wanna unmute Tom and, you know, put the video on.
Alright, unmute, you are unmuted. Whoops. And, pass the start video. Alright, hey Tom, since it's a public hearing, you can stay on for now.
Hey Greg.
So for everyone who was at the meeting two months ago when we had this application, it, the request has significantly simplified since then. There are two components of this, whoops. Are you, okay. Two components of this application initially, and then the greenhouse component, which impacted a side setback, has been eliminated or revised, so no longer needs a side setback. The only setback requirement that needs consideration with variance is a front yard setback for two stone piers. I don't, I didn't look at the detail enough to see it, what the size and height of these are. Can you refresh us on that, Tom?
Sure, they were approximately 25, 24 by 24, with a, just a little bit of an overlap on the cap. So that would be, the cap would be about 27 by 27. And the maximum height that we requested was six feet, and that would include any finial. The reason being that we did some research of other columns in that neighborhood. And for instance, next door at Jeff Reynolds, they're a little bit bigger than that, and it just looks a little too heavy for the site. And then across the street, the residents at the corner of Chestnut and Lake, they're a little bit narrower than that, and they just look a little bit too light. So that's how we came up with that dimension.
Okay, and there's no light fixture on the top or anything, it's just a?
There's no light fixture on this top. We would like to have a ground fixture that would wash the street side face, much the same as the, the columns up at the Fenimore House do.
Okay.
Low voltage, maybe, you know, low wattage is what I want to say. Whether, we haven't decided on the power system yet, whether it's standard voltage or low voltage.
Okay, but, and that'll be well under four feet high, right? Any lighting fixture come up?
Right, the light fixture will be in the ground.
Okay.
And will uplight that, that column.
Okay. That's good, so that, that would not, no matter what you do there, as long as it's under four feet in the setback, it wouldn't require variance. Does anybody have any questions? And Jane, was there any public comment on this application?
No, there was no comment on this one.
Okay. Alright, I'm gonna then move on to leave that one open and move on and open the public hearing for 78 Chestnut Street. And we'll wait till the end of both public hearings to close it, just since we have, since it's gonna be a pretty short public hearing in any event. 78 Chestnut Street is an application for a one, one-room tourist accommodation, or excuse me, short-term rental. There was one public comment submitted from the adjacent neighbor. I'll read it into the file. Actually, I guess two adjacent neighbors in the same, same property. Hello, I'm writing this email on behalf of myself and the Sands of Your family. We reside at 76 Chestnut Street, next to 78 Chestnut Street, which is applying for a short-term rental permit. We'd just like to state that the homeowners of 78 Chestnut Street have been wonderful neighbors for many years. Their property appears to have ample parking to accommodate a one-bedroom short-term rental, and we cannot see that their use of the property in this manner would cause any destruction to the surrounding homes. We fully support their application. Sincerely, the Yarizo and Sands of Your families. So that's helpful. Anyone who was here at the meeting two months ago will remember there was some question about whether this, the space where this room is constituted in an apartment, or is there some sort of small kitchenette kind of piece, not a full kitchen? But the applicant has opted to just kind of keep it simple and just ask for the short-term rental. So it is not going to be considered an accessory apartment, not, not go through that special permit process. It's restricted to one for a short-term permit, short-term rental permit. Does anyone have any questions on this one, or? Alright. It is 5:12, I will close both public hearings. And we'll move to 46 Lake Street. The applicant has submitted a response to the area variance criteria. Everyone got a copy of that through email, but I will read those. And as I get to the, after I read the response from the applicant, if anyone has anything that they want to add, please do that, and so that can be recorded. Before an area variance can be granted, state law requires that the ZBA take into consideration the benefit to the applicant if the variance is granted, as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community, taking into consideration the following: Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. The proposed columns were, this is a response. The proposed columns were designed using a precedent study of existing stone columns in the village, and are in keeping with the character of the immediate neighborhood. Similar columns exist on adjacent properties to the south and west of the subject property. The setback requested is to align the proposed columns with those on neighboring property to the west. Any other comments? Number two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. The benefits sought cannot be achieved by any other method as to place the columns outside the 35-foot front yard setback would defeat their purpose of identifying and enhancing this entrance to the property. Any other comments? I don't know everybody in my picture, I don't know.
No, me neither.
Slow down, if you start down on them.
Okay, guess it depends on if you speak. Yep, alright.
Okay, you have the other view speaker here.
Okay, number three, whether the requested area variance is substantial. While the distance of the requested variance is a little over half the width of the setback, the dimensions of the proposed columns suggest they would be of no significant consequence to the neighborhood. Does anyone disagree with that, or have any other thoughts? And number four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition of the neighborhood or district. The response is, the installation of the columns at the proposed location would have no adverse impact on the environmental condition of the neighborhood and would not physically impact the neighborhood or any adjoining properties in any way. Any other thoughts? Okay, and the last, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to the decision of the Board of Appeals, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance. Yes, but enhancement of the entrance experience to stately properties in the village has historically been a desire held by many and numerous people. Numerous properties have been improved in this way. The difficulty arises from the wording in the current zoning regulations, which could be rewritten to allow such structures within the setback in some residential districts and under certain specific circumstances. Any other comments on that criteria? Okay? So do I have any other comments or questions? Okay.
Well, one, one comment. I just appreciate your efforts to, you know, your redesign of the gazebo to be within the setback.
The greenhouse, yeah.
Greenhouse.
Yep. And I assume the gazebo is either gonna be the same footprint or inside the lake setback?
Gazebo, what we want to do, Sue, is to demo the gazebo, which is within the riparian protection zone, and then move it out of that zone and build a little, just a garden shed for a, for a little garden tractor and some, and gardening tools and that kind of a thing.
Okay. Yeah, I second Marcy's comment. It's nice that you were able to reduce the variance requests.
Thanks.
Any other comment, or can I ask you, Marcy, to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to grant an area variance at 46 Lake Street of 15 feet into the 35-foot setback, front setback.
Would be 20 feet into the, wouldn't it?
Well, it's, it's 30, it's 15 feet from, we're giving you 15 feet of relief. Is that, or did I read it wrong?
20 feet of relief.
20 feet of relief? Okay.
Thank you.
I, I was backwards, I was looking at backwards, sorry about that. Okay, I'll grant an area variance. I propose granting an area variance to 46 Lake Street for relief of 15 feet into the, 20 feet, I said it again. Relief of 20 feet into the 35-foot front yard setback for the construction of two stone columns at the driveway entrance, which would be a maximum of six feet. As proposed on the plan dated, and I don't have the date in front of me.
Do you have that, Jane?
How can we reference the plan?
Last one I got, you have a date of 3/20/20.
Is that the detailed drawing, Jane?
Yeah, that's the little layout plan that you just sent me.
Okay. There's also, there also was a detailed drawing, or an elevational drawing of that. The, hmm.
Well, we can just say as proposed.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't think it's their plans on file. Yeah?
Sounds good.
Alright, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Alright, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Um, I don't, I think that's gonna, I think you're gonna have to either maybe ask each person one at a time, because I can't see them as a group very easily.
Okay.
Or something.
I'll, I'll start, I don't know if you're lined up the same way mine is. I vote yes. Marcy?
I vote yes.
David Wood?
I vote yes.
Denise?
I vote yes.
Georgia?
She's muted.
Thank you, alright. So your variance is granted.
Sorry, I'm trying to interrupt. You don't need to mute, Georgia.
Sorry, what was that?
You don't need to mute yourself. You don't need to mute.
Oh, okay, sorry. My cat tends to make a lot of noise when I'm on to meetings, so I figured I'd save you guys.
Alright. Thank you, Tom.
Okay, thank you. We really appreciate the work with us and hopefully we'll get it done this year. They'll start some of the tree clearing, hopefully when Governor Cuomo loosens up the restrictions a little bit more. I think Josh will start, thinking about starting next week, so we'll see how it goes. Thanks again.
Thank you very much.
Okay, bye-bye now.
Okay, we'll move on to 78 Chestnut Street. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
I don't. I think we pretty well took care of this the last time. The only thing that was hanging was the issue about the apartment, but that seems to be resolved.
Right. Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant a permit for a one-room short-term rental at 78 Chestnut Street.
Um, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Actually, I forgot to have you, Jane, fill in, there was some discussion I had with Jane about whether it should be effective now, or whether it should be effective January 1. Do you want to explain?
I forgot, I forgot to ask Patty about that. Typically, our permits now only run for three years, their calendar years. If, once somebody gets one, if they choose to start renting that year, then they have two full years following, so this is 2020. So their permit would expire on December 31st of 2022. Because of this situation and the fact that probably there aren't, she might choose not to even start renting this year at all, there's the possibility of giving her the option of having the permit start officially January 1st of 2021, and then she actually will get three full calendar years of rentals. So I figured, I figured you might, you know, either phrase the decision or give, let her decide whether or not she wanted to make it effective this year or not start till next year.
Well, if she, if she starts renting today, or if she starts renting December 31st, her reset button starts January 1st anyway, right?
But it would start.
Because it renews on the calendar year. So we can base, I mean, does this work if we make it contingent, where the start date, the start date will begin when the applicant informs us? Because, you know, I mean, obviously we have special circumstances, and I mean, we can, if we're gonna wait for her, we might have to put it off. But, you know, somehow we have to say some kind of contingent thing, because the, the advantage to her is she gets an extra year. Whereas now, you know, she'd kind of uses up a year by, you know, she rents once in 2020, that uses up her year. And so she only has, she's down to two renewal years, right?
Exactly, yep.
But if she has no rentals in 2020, she gets three renewal years. So how do we put that? It's just contingent on when she starts it. I mean, if she starts at December 31st, she only gets two renewal years.
You want to try to give her a call? You said she'd be available by phone.
Yeah, if you want to give me a sec, I'll, I'll step away to do it, but I'll just be right back.
Okay, thank you.
Who's second in the motion? Because I was trying to write the way it was.
Dave Wood did.
Dave did, okay, thank you.
We don't have any music to play during this time.
I could sing.
Let's have a quick question. So if, if you all approve this today, that clock doesn't start today.
Typically, it would. I mean, the only, the only reason this came up as an option is because this summer rental is very different. This coming summer rental season is completely different than a typical year.
Right.
Typically, no, no matter when you get your permit, the first year is effectively a partial year, and then it extends to full years after that, because they always expire at the end of the year. So this was Jane's question to me earlier this week was, given that, does it make sense to, you know, if it's what their choice would be, certainly not make this effective until January 1, so that they really get three full summers, which is what a normal permit would allow you? It's just that this year, we don't really have a real summer.
Can we, can we do that? Can you give post-dated approval for something?
Well, we can put a contingency in the motion. We can put a contingency in the motion. We, it's special to, the other thing is, there are some things, I know there are, there's at least one upstate county that closed all BMBs, all short-term rentals indefinitely. Excuse me, indefinitely, they were concerned about people from New York City coming up here. So in a situation like that, Otsego County has not proposed that. But, you know, if we're talking, you know, what could happen, something like that could happen, and that would be overarching, and that would trump our, our motion anyway. So it's just the special circumstances that we have to deal with this. And I would think, I mean, we could ask Martin, but I would think that this is something that could be defended.
Yeah, I think certainly not something we would do, other than this unique situation. The, the only, the, the reason I think that you wouldn't typically do it is because what happens if the law changes between now and January 1? What is the status of an approval that doesn't take effect till after that? But there's certainly nothing at all in the pipeline to indicate that there's any risk at that. Did you get a chance to talk?
Yes, I did, I did get ahold of her. She said she has no intention of renting it this year, so she would prefer it to start on January 1, 2021, and go through December 31st, 2023.
Okay. So we can add that to the motion, that if anyone has an objection to that, they would, you know, let's speak about that at the kind of public, or I mean, at the discussion point. Do you want to add that to the motion, Marcy, or?
Yeah, yeah, so Michael, amend the motion to say that the permit will take effect January 1, 2021.
Okay. Some reason my Zoom keeps clicking out.
Can I put that at start January 1, 2021, and end December 31st, 2023? Just to be clear.
It's coined by me. Yes, it's the January 1st part that's important.
Yeah. Is there a second to the amendment?
I'll second the amendment.
Okay, alright. So any further discussion, or anyone have any questions or concerns about taking that approach? Okay. Alright, Michael, you want to read back the total motion?
Marcy and Dave made second to the amendment to grant approval for a one-room short-term rental at 78 Chestnut Street, with a permit to take effect on January 1, 2021, and end December 31st, December 2023. Okay?
Okay, when is it, I'm sorry.
January 1, 2021, and end December 31st, 2023.
Okay. Okay, alright.
I don't know if I'd say "and", I'd say "expire".
Expire?
Yeah, because we've got renewals.
Okay.
Better terminology.
Okay, I have no problem with that.
And I would just ask that your minutes kind of capture the discussion of why that's kind of unique to this.
I have it.
Application, okay.
I got it, I got it.
Okay, alright, so we'll have a vote. I vote yes. Marcy?
I vote yes.
David Wood?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
And Georgia?
I vote yes, awesome.
Okay, alright, so that's granted. We didn't have any minutes, did we?
No.
Yes, you had minutes from March.
Oh, I didn't see them. Did I see them?
I thought I sent it in the package on Friday.
Let me see if I can see.
Sorry.
That's okay. I can pull them up on the screen if you want.
Yeah, why don't you do that? Because I'm.
Not everyone knows if you can see, but Kyle managed to get us on YouTube.
Okay. Can you email each everybody real quick?
It was down below. It was, it was below, so that's why I didn't see it. Sorry.
You need me to, I can email them, hold on.
It came on May 4th, though?
No, it would have come May 1st.
Yeah, Friday.
It was the package, the May 1st package.
Okay, I see one thing, it just, I didn't think it was minutes, but I'm, okay, I do see it. Six pages, you probably want to. So the people at that meeting were myself, Marcy, Denise, and Georgia. So if the four of us want to read, read through that, unless you've already read through it. Does anybody need more time to read through it?
I just need a minute.
Sure.
Kyle's got the thing up now. I don't know how long it's been up. I just noticed it.
Yeah.
I'm ready whenever you all are ready.
Okay, does everyone have a chance?
Slow reader, slow reader here.
Is there a motion to approve?
Marcy, she's.
Okay, I'm, I'm slow, I'm slow. I just want to make sure, check the things that I said, make sure. I, I didn't have my foot in my mouth, I want to check that. Okay, looks good. I'll make up, I make motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We'll vote, I vote to approve. Marcy?
I vote to approve.
And who else, I say? Denise?
I vote to approve as well.
Georgia?
I also vote to approve.
Now we had four females last time, I remember that now. Anything else we need to know about, Jane?
Not that I know of. I did mention to you yes, yesterday or the other day about the. I did mention to you yesterday, the other day, about the possibility of solar panels, and they did come in, or they, I did talk to them today about it, and they're looking at it. I'm not sure yet. They have a lot over Lakeland Shores, and no matter what, it looks like it's going to be going for a zoning variance, an area variance for the property setbacks themselves, and I still don't know yet whether or not it's going to be on the one side, which would definitely fall within the waterfront overlay, no build zone, or the other side of the house, which could be outside the no build line. So, once they figure that out, but it might come to you guys next month, I don't know yet.
Who is this?
Paula Wykoff.
Oh, okay. Going solar, wow.
Yeah, but she's, she's got a roof that the solar guys don't want to put panels on, so it has to be freestanding panels on the ground, and she's talking about 12-foot tall.
I also thought, they have a residence agreement, that you can't be, you can't have a second story or something. I mean, wouldn't that fly in the face of that, too? I mean, not that that's our concern, but I'm just...
And that's the problem.
You thought of that.
There's nothing binding. I mean, yes, they have, you know, the covenants for the thing, but nothing is binding as far as, you know, if somebody wants to do something, it's kind of, technically, as long as the village lets them, they can still do it.
Yeah, it would be a minimal issue if there was any issue with the covenants. It's not, not a zoning issue.
Right. So, but yes, it's, they're talking about, you know, freestanding panels, and she mentioned something about them being 12-foot tall, which seems slightly tall for solar panels. I don't know if that's, yeah. So, I mean, she needs to get, you know, more information, but it might be coming to you guys next month, but that's the only thing.
That would go to HPARB, too, also, right?
Yes.
Wouldn't that go to HPARB?
But I would assume because it's a variance with the design and everything like that, they'd probably hold off going to HPARB until you guys made a ruling on it one way or the other. Because like I said, there's a possibility that would both, you would need variances from both the waterfront overlay district, no build section, and property setbacks, because it's a very long, wide property, and over in the R2 district, we have a 35-foot front yard setback, a 20-foot rear yard setback, and there's parts of her lot that are only like 60 feet long or wide, 60 feet deep, so...
100-foot waterfront setback, right?
Yes. Yeah, the setback for the waterfront actually goes into the street beyond the house, so...
So we'll see, see what comes up, but that's the only one on the horizon, we have a whole...
That I know of, yes, that's the only thing that anybody's talked to me about.
Okay.
Can I ask, I mean, just one thought on that. I'd sort, if, if it were to come to us first, I don't know how I feel about that. I would kind of like to have the input of HPARB in the plane, but in other words, going forward, as we go into, you know, as we start adopting alternative energy sources, and other people will probably be thinking about putting up solar panels, you know, how are we going to approach that? In other words...
It would typically, you know...
It's something that might become necessary, so, I don't know, I just think that's important when we, if we're gonna do a variance. This isn't necessarily a variance for one thing, you know, so, in other words, if we give a variance for a 12-foot solar panel, people will get the idea that they can put up, you know, 12-foot billboards. I don't know. I mean, we, well, anyway, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it, I guess.
It wouldn't involve planning board at all, right? It would just be HPARB?
Correct. It was just HPARB.
Yeah. Okay. And what is the, I don't remember us ever having any request for variance at, you know, specifically for a solar panel, so I assume that means they're mostly on roofs. Is there, is HPARB reviewed solar?
They, they've granted permission for panels on roofs. They try to keep them either, you know, on the rear of the house, or at the best, on a side, depending on what the structure is itself. We've had them on both garages and houses. I don't recall them ever being on anything freestanding, though, so this would be the first freestanding one.
Okay. All right. But we'll see if that comes true, and find out the details when we get an application. All right. Any other comments or discuss? Turn, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, just raise your hand.
Bye.
Okay. Thanks so much. Thank you all.